Welcome to the Extraregional Cooperative School Board District meeting for December 17th. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unaround, invisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you very much. We have a lot of activity happening at the high school tonight, so it's great to see so many people out and about. So we're going to move quickly through the first so we can get you to where you need to be, students. Good? All right. So we'll start with introductions. Bob, would you like to?
Good evening, Bob. I'm representing Kensington in the Co-op Board.
Tammy Gunst, the Co-op Board for Stratum.
Scott Dennehy, Brentwood.
Bill Gothea, Chair, Co-op Board.
Don Boland, Exeter.
Erin Garcia, Dave Reddase, Stratum.
Amy Ransom, Newfield.
Kimberly Masucci, Exeter.
Margaret Coza, Exeter High School and Seaco School of Technology.
Calla Harris, Cooperative Middle School.
Lucy Blackburn, Cooperative Middle School.
Welcome, welcome. Could we have the administrators introduce themselves?
Esther Asbell, Superintendent.
Molly O'Keefe, Director of Finance.
And Heather Murray, HR Director.
Thank you all for showing up. Thanks. So I'm going to jump right into the students' reports. Is that good with all of you? And then I'll open up to public discussion right after that. So, all right, who would like to go first? Who needs to? All right, go ahead.
Hi, I am Calla Harris. I'm an eighth grade student at Cooperative Middle School and got to experience civics class for the first time during this past trimester. This was a special time to have this class because the 2024 presidential election was taking place. My peers and I got to learn everything about the election. This included how citizens vote, the Electoral College, and all about the candidates. We got to experience how voting happens because our class held a mock election. This worked by having all the grades to vote during the social studies period. We all got jobs such as handing out ballots, checking people in, and counting up all the votes once it was over. All of the participants got to experience what it felt like to be a part of the process of voting and now better understand why it is so important to be involved. Having civics has given me a better understanding of what I can do in my future. A lot of young adults are not educated enough and do not know the importance of voting. Without people voting, life-changing acts and bills can be passed that are not the best thing for everyone. For example, in Corida, New Hampshire, only a small number of the town's members would show up to meetings. At one particular meeting, an older man without any kids proposed that they cut the school budget in more than half, from $1.7 million to $800,000. The bill was passed 20 to 14, and the townspeople were outraged. There was talk of kids having to learn in church basements and parents having to pay out of pocket for their kid's education. The people of Corida did not realize that this happened because they did not care enough to show up. Once the citizens realized that they were to blame for letting this happen, they took a stand. The townspeople came together with a plan to reverse the budget cuts. 379 voters registered, and they ended up at 377 to 2. This was 60% of the town that came out to vote because they believed in the cause. I would have never known about something so important if it were not for this class. We live in the same state as these people, and still, my peers and I had no idea until we read this article during civics. At home, my family has the news on a lot. Hearing all these things we learned in class made me feel excited that I could apply my knowledge in the future. I was able to participate in discussions with my family at dinner, and they were so interested in how I learned all these things. I felt I had a much better understanding of why civics was so important. I feel this class has given me a much better understanding about government, and I feel well-educated. This is why it is such an important class in our curriculum. If we were never taught about this, we wouldn't know how important it is to show up because every vote counts. The right to vote is something very special that Americans have. Some countries are less fortunate. This is why we should use the right to vote for good causes. I hope that every student in the future has the privilege to take civics. This class was a new learning experience to help me grow as a person, not only in the classroom but also outside in the real world. I can use my knowledge in everyday life and feel that this class was an experience that made me take an interest in a topic I had never thought about until now.
That is great.
Great job!
Excellent. Awesome. When you started talking, you said something that was really, you said, "Get involved," and that's what you did tonight. You got involved. It's a public meeting. You're here. You showed up. You spoke. And we really appreciate that. We need a lot more young people to do that. We really appreciate you being here and talking about this. So thank you so much. I'd just, I'd like to ask the board members, do you have anything you'd like to ask, or?
Is this a new class?
Um, I think it is. This is the first year that it was at CMS.
Yes, it is a new class. So each CMS student is presenting on something that's new this year at CMS.
Amazing.
It sounds like it's a class well worth taking. And when you're 18, I'll see you at the voting. Excellent. I love it. Thank you for getting involved. Stay involved. We need you. So, thank you.
Do you need to run? Yeah, a little bit.
Okay. That's why I'm going. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
All right. Lucy, would you like to?
Sure.
Add to that? Thank you.
Hi, school, members of the school board. My name is Lucy Blackburn, and I'm in the seventh grade. I'm here to speak about the two new classes, Lab and Literacy. To start off, my highlight from Lab was our soft-boiled egg assignment. The goal of the assignment was not just to make a perfectly soft-boiled egg with little instruction from Mr. Clapp, our teacher. The goal was actually to teach us about handling warm temperatures and glassware safely, interpreting a graph, and maintaining a clean area. The second class is Literacy. One of the highlights thus far has been our current project, the History Mysteries Summit. Our current project required us to look at a list of eight different unsolved mysteries in history, such as Amelia Earhart, William Shakespeare, D.B. Cooper, the Bermuda Triangle, the lost colony of Roanoke, Bigfoot, the Loch Ness Monster, and the Mary Celeste. This assignment requires us to develop skills to analyze research and put that knowledge into a fictional short story. At this point, I'm hoping to major in Fine Arts in college and hopefully go into the tattoo industry. Although I know I might change my mind either way, no matter what career I choose, these classes have taught me important skills. If you look deeper to the assignments and classes, they've taught us skills such as problem identification, locating good sources for research, maintaining a clean workspace, public speaking, knowing when and how to use lab equipment appropriately, and professional writing skills. In addition, I can embrace my creativity as well as respect and listen to many different opinions. All these skills will serve me well in the future.
Amazing.
Yes, they will. Nice job. And you speak so well in public, too. So you should add that to the list. Thank you for sharing. Anybody have any comments they want to add?
I'm just, I, I'm so, I'm not surprised because we have amazing students in classes, but I would think if I walked in that you were not in middle school. I mean, all of, it's amazing. So you are, you're very poised. And that was, it's so impactful to hear from students, like what you're enjoying and what you're gaining from it. So we learn a lot. So thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
That's great. I know. All right. Do you want to hang out for a little bit and have Margaret go? And then we'll let you go both at the same time? Is that all right? Margaret, thank you for showing up. Yeah, you're up. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Margaret Coza. I'm a senior here at Exeter High School, and I am a second-year student in the Honors Biomedical Science and Technology Program over at SST. So I chose to take Biomed because I have always been passionate about biology and wanted to explore it at a more hands-on level. My interest was particularly sparked during the sophomore year sneak peek field trip, where the students toured all the SST classes and were introduced to the different programs. And on this field trip, Dr. Murphy discussed how students in this program are trained to grow and harvest chow cells, which are Chinese hamster ovary cells. These cells serve as a model for human disease and are critically significant in pharmaceutical research. Through this class, I have earned a cell culture certification and accumulated 17 college credits through dual enrollment with Great Bay Community College and SNHU. This experience has enabled me to explore various biology-related fields, deepening my understanding and confidence in the subject. I'm highly satisfied with the outcomes of this program and hope these opportunities will remain for students in the future, as it has opened so many doors for me and will continue to open doors for other students. As I plan for next year, I've applied to college for public health and neuroscience programs, where I can build on the skills I've gained in this program. Thank you.
Wow. You said 17 credits already?
Yes, 17.
17, that's amazing. That's a whole semester.
I know.
Oh, that means a lot. So Mom and Dad, that's going to save a lot of money. Yes, nice job.
Thank you.
That is so great. And your plans for going on sound great. You said public health and neuroscience?
Yes, yes. And I actually, I didn't even know what public health really was. Like, I didn't know what like studying in public health really meant before this class. But last year, we had an epidemiology, which is like the study of disease and the spread of disease. And we had a unit on epidemiology, and that's really what sparked my interest in that. So that's why I'm doing public health and neuroscience, which I probably wouldn't have known that that was something I was interested in if I didn't take this class. So it was definitely beneficial to me.
Oh, that is great. And so these are things that like we don't know unless you show up and speak. And you did that so well, so.
I learned, I heard words I never heard of. So that's amazing.
Great. Well, thank you so much for showing up. There is a concert and a basketball game we put on for you, so you can go watch that if you'd like. You do not need to hang out anymore. But thank both of you for showing up and speaking on behalf of the students.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
Great job.
Just, just to note, Carter is disappointed because he was not feeling well. So we're going to bring Carter back probably in the spring, after we get through budget season. I think he's excited to come, so we didn't want to take that opportunity away from him.
Thank you, parents. Appreciate you.
And Carly is also not feeling well, so.
I know. We're going to miss out on a couple of student reports. So with that, we are going to open it up to public input. It's 6:12. We'll give 30 minutes for public input, so if anybody has any public input. But I do see people in the public that probably want to say something. So I'll welcome you to the, what's that? Yes, yeah, you're up.
Thank you for having us. I'm back. I feel like I'm coming.
Yes, Jennifer, it's good to see you.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer Delory. I am the Language Learning Area Leader for the World Language Department here at the high school. And Christina's going to talk about her trip in a couple of minutes, but I wanted to say why we're here so early, because this is really early. We're looking to propose trips for spring of 2026. But it's exactly that, that we looked at the calendar and the spring meetings got a little nutty. So rather than wait until maybe June, we wanted to give our students as much time to save money, to kind of start a payment plan. Because as we talk about every time, these are not cheap trips, unfortunately, and we'd love to do it for free. So just being able to propose and get this process started early gives families more time to plan ahead and kind of budget out things a little bit better. So I'm proposing a trip to Southern Spain in February, pretty standard trip for a language class. I'm really excited about it. It's my favorite place to go in the world when I take students to travel. I had to decide between April and February, and aside from not wanting to step on their toes to travel at the same time in April, I had to convince myself that February was going to be okay, because the last time I traveled to February to this particular place, I was pregnant, and our flight was canceled, and I slept on the floor in the Philadelphia airport. I spent more than 24 hours there, and it was kind of a mess. And coming back was tricky, too. So I'm fingers crossed, everything will go fine here. But I'm sure you have all the material, and you've had a chance to look over it. But it's a really great trip, and I look forward to taking the students. So I'll let Christina talk, and then if you guys have questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Great.
I am Christina Peterson. I teach English here at the high school. I've been here 17 years. I live in Brentwood, and I have a fourth grader and a kindergartner who's very proud of this necklace that he made me wear today. Loving Swayze right now. I've never done a trip. I was inspired last year by Jackie Ketcher, who was an English teacher here at the high school. She took a trip with students to Iceland, and several of her students did these really amazing projects and brought them in and happily shared them with me. They did some really cool photography and some really cool poetry, and it inspired me so much that we decided to pose a trip to Italy. So I'm here on behalf of myself and my teaching partner, Dennis Megliozzi, and we are hoping to bring kids to Italy in spring of 2026. Our trip would be cultural immersion but also food blogging, because Italy, you have to eat food. And we thought it would be really cool with photography and 21st century skills, in terms of taking photos and then writing, and hopefully doing some really cool travel and some awesome restaurants, and then writing about it when we get back. So that's our plan for Italy.
Great. No, both trips, thank you for putting this into the board packet. Both trips look wonderful. I'm assuming the cost, we always talk about the cost, that, I know students love travel. I know you're associated with that, but that you're bringing us trips that are, that are within line of other companies that are doing the same thing. We don't have bandwidth to look at that, but we're assuming that the trust is there. I really do like that you put in the letter that we'll work with families for fundraising opportunities. That's really important to us, to ensure that if a kid wants to go and doesn't have the means, that they certainly have an opportunity or path to make that work. And we, I certainly appreciate you bringing it to the board so early. Thank you. This is, so I looked at it as like, is this for this spring? Uh-oh, what's going to happen? So appreciate that, bringing it to us early. Just ask, anybody have any comments?
Numbers, how many students do you hope to bring?
So it sounds like we can do like 12 per adult. We will have two adults on ours, plus Students Love Travel gets to send an adult as well, so we'll have three adults. We can take around 18 to 20.
We've taken as much as like 25 before. That's a really large number. We really try to keep it around 12, 15 total. With the three adults for her, for me, it would be, again, two adults.
Thank you.
Right. Good. No question. I'd look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve both trips.
Okay, great. Thank you. Have a second? Great. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Excellent. Thank you. Enjoy. Good luck. Yes.
Thank you for having us. Happy holidays.
Yes, happy holidays. Thanks. All right. Team, it is now to approve the minutes. So I assume that you've all got a chance to read the minutes. They look good to me. So I'd look for a motion to approve the minutes from November 19th, so the public minutes. Amy? Great. Second? Any discussion? All right. Then all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Abstain? One abstention?
It does say that Kim was not here.
I was looking at the wrong date.
Sorry.
No, 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 thank you.
No, it was online. You did the third.
Oh, that was the online one?
Via online, November 1. Is that right, Kim?
That's, I was trying to remember.
Yeah, okay. So then that needs to be.
Can you remember, Kim? Because I can't.
I gotta look at my, let me look at my calendar. I must look at my calendar.
I remember one night when somebody was on Zoom.
Yeah, I think that was the third. I think that was December 3rd, because that was the budget workshop, correct?
I think you were here.
I was here. Then you were online for the night, for November 1. So you were here.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. No, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Appreciate that. So, and then, and then we had non-public minutes for November 19th. Look for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Great. Can I have a second? Thank you, Erin. So all those in favor, please raise your hand.
I think I abstained from that, because I wasn't on for that.
I know.
Non-public.
Is it, is your name not on the sheet? Just to make sure.
Yeah, because I think that you were not on for that.
It's not on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think I was at that one, right?
It says, um, Kim and Scott were not for the non-public.
Yeah. I wasn't, I didn't do non-public. I can't, I know. I'm trying to find.
Trouble with my own.
So for the approval, we got one, two, three, four, five.
When did you announce you were, you were retiring? It was that, it was that?
I think it was the October meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Good memories, Tammy.
I just remember if I hadn't showed up, I wouldn't know.
All right. So just to get clarification on that, for the non-public minutes, we had, what's that?
Bob, you made the motion?
Yeah. And then how many did we, just, so Dawn, did you raise your hand?
No, because I was checking. I, yes.
You do, okay.
Yeah, I was here. Yeah, yeah.
And one abstention, Scott. All right, perfect. All right, then we'll move on to the December 3rd public minutes. So good luck for motion to approve those.
Those are the ones we should do. Motion.
Excellent. May I have a second? Thank you, Tammy. And so all those in favor of accepting the minutes, please raise your hand. Excellent. Looks like everyone approves those. Great. Thank you. Well, I'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Sure. First up, as you may or may not know, the date for intent to retire letters is December 1st. So our letters that have come in for intent to retire and would like to be approved to retire this evening is Barsha Cook, who is a world language teacher from CMS, David Jones, who is a social studies teacher at CMS, Bob Brown, who is an ELA teacher at CMS, and Stacy Jordan, who is a pre-K teacher at SST, who has been here for 32 years. All of these teachers have been here for a very long time.
Amazing.
So they're all planning on retiring, and I would ask for a motion to approve those, to accept those retirements, I guess is the better language.
Second.
Regretfully.
Yes.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Kim. All right, all those in favor of the motion to accept those? All right. Thank you.
And then the other piece that we put in your packet was really the overview around the rising cost in special ed. You, in your packet was a letter from Commissioner Eteblu, kind of explaining the reduction in supporting the additional or the revenue that would come in normally, as you can see in that letter. In 2022, the state reimbursed 98.3% of the cat aid, which is about 300% over the expected cost of special ed. And then in 2023, it went down to 87%, was reimbursed. And this year, the letter that we received not that long ago, I can find the date, but I would say it was in the last six weeks we received that letter. November 12th.
67.
The costs are going to be 67.5% of reimbursed, which clearly has an impact on our budget, because remember, that helps reduce the tax rate at the end of the year. It's not money we, that we get in that we can spend, but it does come in as revenue. So that's why Molly has made adjustments based on the information of anticipated revenue will be lower in that particular area because of this letter from the commissioner. So Dr. Bennett, who is our Director of Special Education and our Assistant Superintendent, put together kind of an overview of key issues, mostly to just inform people around the rising costs. There is some indication or inference that perhaps districts are over-identifying, and that comes from the state. So that is not accurate. As we've seen in our presentations from both CMS and DHS, our needs have increased. The CDC nationally is saying that one in every six children now have mental health issues, depression, anxiety, to the need where they need some kind of therapeutic setting or support or intervention. So many of our costs are around mental health, I would venture to say, and I certainly can double-check myself, but as I recall the presentations, we're not identifying more students in the areas of math support or reading support, because we've put in those intervention periods in that MTSS system that you've also had presentations on. So those numbers are pretty, staying pretty stable, and we're grabbing kids member in that tier two that aren't identified to reduce that identification process in those areas. However, we are having more students with mental health issues that are requiring their inability to access their education without additional supports through an IEP. That's really where the bulk of our money is, is going. Some of the reasons, besides the world and the CDC and what's happening for kids post-pandemic, et cetera, was that the state legislator has also passed some laws that have impacted our rising costs. One of them is certainly House Bill 1656, which was proposed an additional $17.7 million in special education aid. That was shelved by the Senate earlier this year. If you look above in that letter for the, from the commissioner, the gap is about 16 million. So if that, if they hadn't shelved that, then we still would be getting that 87%, and it would have closed that gap for our school just because of New Hampshire. Also, remember, we spoke about RSA 186C2 was passed in June of 2022, which said our students that needed services and transitional services up until they turned 22. It used to be when they turned 21. Many students in that age, it's because they are having difficulty in the community, their needs are generally very high. These are some of the students that we get reimbursed for because that cost is over that catastrophic aid. So that added a whole additional year on. And from an educator point of view, great. But from a financial point of view, so the board is well informed, should you get questions, or should we get questions during our budget process, that did impact our budget. And I believe it was upwards of three additional students at a high cost that are impacted our budget directly. Another area in regards to the state legislator is that the lawmakers have failed to keep state aid aligned with inflation, the rising cost, despite increasing overall appropriations from 22.3 million in 2017 to only 33.9 million in 2024. So they're not adjusting that to, everything costs more. We know that, unfortunately. So those are some of those things that we wanted the board to be aware of. Also, even the way the law is written, districts have to cover up to 3.5 times the average per pupil cost, which is $72,131 in 2024, before we can even ask for state assistance, which is now reduced to 67%. So we already have to pay three times, three and a half times the cost before we even consider for reimbursement through where the legislature is at. The state's tiered reimbursement system, 80% above the threshold and 100% above the 2,003, 2,000, 3,000, no, 203,000, 230, it's a weird number because they're all the same, per student, relies on full funding from legislature, which has not occurred. The Department of Education, as indicated by Commissioner Eteblu's letter, he has not requested emergency funding, citing the need for further analysis. Clearly, the further analysis has been done, as he stated in that letter that you all saw. To my knowledge, he is still not requesting emergency funding, even though the analysis is complete. Also, Commissioner Eteblu suggests, suggested to optimize the nearly $1 billion already spent by district ignores the immediacy of the funding crisis and places districts in a very poor position. So our recommendations that we have, we would like the commissioner to request emergency funding in this area to cover that 16.4 million shortfall. Legislative leaders, we hope will prioritize passing reforms to the special education funding formula in the upcoming session. How you can become involved as citizens, should you choose to, would be pay attention to the legislature, pay attention to your Senate, pay attention to your ed, education fund. We have a local person out of Exeter that will be, I believe, the vice chair of the Educational Fund Committee. So we're going to give you all that information next month and how to be involved. You can do it all online if you choose. You can see all the bills that are coming up. You can vote yea or nay. You can have input. You certainly can go to Concord. I have been to Concord many times and spoken to many different things, social, emotional learning, funding, et cetera. I have an impact, but certainly not the same. I have an impact, but certainly not the same impact as constituents that vote. And so I would urge everyone that has an interest to pay attention and and voice, take that opportunity, such as was spoken to tonight. You do have the opportunity to be involved, and I'm talking to everyone, and I would encourage you. We're going to try to keep the board well informed through these public meetings of potential educationally-related legislature that comes through so that you can then make a decision about whether to get involved or not. You may recall that many districts combined forces and sued the state for an inadequate amount of money for public education. The districts won. Of course, it's being appealed. That amount was at 10,000, an increase to $10,000, which is not nearly the average cost. I believe Commissioner Etterblu put something out early that the average cost in the state of New Hampshire, I think, was 22,000?
$10,000.
Per student. So at $10,000, we're still not even meeting the average cost across the state per student in our districts. So I would also encourage you to pay attention to that. There was legislative last session to raise the cost per student in special ed, and as I noted, that got shelved. So there are opportunities to at least get involved and voice your opinion if you choose to, but as citizens that have a concern around taxpayer, what you're paying us taxpayers, this is really the only way we can make a substantial impact on you as a taxpayer. As we know, our schools and our costs of operating, even if our enrollment decreases like we have in the co-op, 30 students from last year to this year, 30 students spread over grades six through 12 does not mean I can reduce by a teacher or I can cut a program. They're not all in one grade. When people move in and out of our elementary schools that feed us our portion or our supplement for the SAU, I can't reduce by a principal when the school is going up and down by 10 or 12 students because, again, it's across all grades. Obviously, all of our costs continue to increase out of district costs, which we've talked about at our budget workshop, the inability for us to hire our own paraprofessionals, and we have to do contracted services, we've talked about that. These are things that we don't really have a lot of control over because we have to meet the services required through the individual education plan. If we don't, we're out of compliance, and then we can be in a lawsuit for not supporting our student in line to the services they're supposed to be getting in the IEP. So we have to have someone do deliver those services. That being said, we continue to try recruit recruiting, et cetera, but it's an expense that is higher than if we were able to hire our own paraprofessionals, BCBAs, those behavior specialists. Sometimes we have to hire and or take contracted service through to meet these IEPs. So I would argue that it's not an over-identification, that part of it is the mental health crisis that's in the United States right now and certainly in our state. I would argue that there are not sufficient mental health services for adolescents in the state of New Hampshire. We have students, I have a student now, not in the co-op, that has been hospitalized, been released from the hospital and returning to school against all advice, but there is no place to put this student. There is no service available. Every the the barn is full, so to speak. And so we will do our best, but this student will suffer because we don't have the setting or the services that this student needs. That is not a unique situation, unfortunately for us. So sometimes we're trying to piece together bits and pieces of accessing an education that doesn't really address the mental health need. It addresses the law, and we're in compliance, but it's not addressing the mental health needs of our students. So I would also urge you to pay attention to the laws in the state of New Hampshire that have to deal with adolescent support for mental health as a state. We do not have the services we need, which in turn sends it back to the school, which in turn increases cost, which in turn impacts taxpayers. So next month, we'll talk about the Educational Freedom Act voucher systems and how that is impacting our budgets as taxpayers and give you all the information you need to pay attention to the legislature, along with us trying to give you a monthly update around anything we feel you might want to might want to pay attention to or that we want the public to watch and and know that things are happening. Again, how you choose to interact is entirely up to you, but I think it's we need to do a better job of informing the public that these things are out there, should you choose to participate and have give voice. I hope this is helpful. We'll continue to have a little bit more focus than we normally do just because things are changing pretty rapidly. Right now, there's about 150, I believe, LSRs to be that are filed. We don't know what they're going to say yet. All they have to do is put them in with a title. Many of them are around social, emotional learning, special education, parental rights, funding. So we will, we have no idea what they're going to say, but when we do, we will bring them to your attention, and you can choose to do nothing, something, whatever you want. So hopefully, this will be helpful for people that have questions.
What does LSR mean?
Legislative, um, what it is, is they have to file an LSR, which is it's basically an intent that I'm going to write a possible law, a bill.
Okay.
I forget the technical name. We just have used the acronyms.
And these, are they specifically education-related that you're talking?
150 of them right now are.
150 of them are.
Yes, because we target and pay attention to those. And then as they come out, and some of them are nebulous and don't, we don't, we kind of don't worry about, but the ones that could impact us financially. And some are, you know, for example, many years ago, the bullying law, that impacted us financially. We had to provide training, we had to revamp our policies, we had to offer different services, all good things. So some of them, we're, I would be in support of, right? Other ones, maybe not so much. So it doesn't mean they're all harmful, it just means we need to pay attention because it also may have a budgetary impact for us.
So this is a heated topic, so I appreciate you writing all this down, bringing it up to. I certainly have some comments, but I see people with their hands raised, so I do want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to to say something. We'll start with Bob, then go to Erin, and we'll.
I have two comments. The first one is, is there any evidence that the commissioner used for saying that we're over-identifying special needs students, or was it just stated?
It's pretty new news, and so you would have to ask him that.
Oh, okay. The second one is that one of the chief groups that are criticized for overspending in public schools is the school board. We are the school board. What can we as a group, how can we respond besides individually as voters, but we as a group respond to such claims?
I think part of it is being well informed, so you can, like, if you get approached around special ed, you can say, actually, in the legislature, they shelved a 17, over $17 million that would have reduced, would have closed that gap, and then we would have gotten the normal revenue that we anticipated at the 87% instead of the 67%, which means your tax rate would have been offset by more money. I think that's key, is to have those facts. I think also being well informed around the hot topics, our enrollment. We know it's declined, we've publicized it. We, last year, we cut, as you know, with through the early retirement, ended up cutting, not replacing five teachers at the high school and one and a half at the middle school. This year, there are other positions that, as you're well aware during the budget process, that we have also reduced. So we're trying to hold our own while still providing an education that our parents expect because they moved to the SAU, many of them, for the education. So to cut it so slim so that we would have to reduce such things as the number of AP classes we offer, or electives, or the amount of languages we provide, et cetera, that's when the public, it's really important, if those things are important to you, to come to the deliberative session, to be part of the process. So as board members, really encouraging people, when they talk to you, you do have a voice. And if this is important to you, you have to come and partake, just like our kids do, like you pointed out, Bill. So I think as board members, really trying to reemphasize that participate if it's important to you, and there's some things you stand for, like having the kinds of resources and the kinds of opportunities and programming that we have, that's those things will be cut. So if we go to a default budget, we're going to have, that's, I think the difference was right around 500,000, is that right, Molly, give or take?
Um, yeah.
That definitely is programs and our positions. We're not going to, there's no more wiggle room in supplies, or that's going to impact kids. And so I think getting that word out to parents as board members and being well prepared to answer those questions at the public hearing and the deliberative are critical components. Most critical is getting people there.
Yeah, I was just shy of 500,000.
Erin, you have a couple of things you want to?
I was just wondering if Dr. Bennett's letter would be available to us because it's not in our packet, I believe?
It is.
It is, yeah.
It is.
It says draft on it.
Yeah.
Looks like this.
I missed it.
It's right before the way in, before his letter.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
So it is available, and I will tell you that I'm proud to say that, once again, SAU 16 takes the lead. We talked about this at our superintendent's organization for the Southeast, and when we talked about this, all the superintendents requested that we send them this, and they're now using this with their boards. So it's it's nice to be in the lead and help our other superintendents, so it's the same message going out across the state.
Great.
And just LSR is, sorry.
Erin, you want to continue?
I was just going to give you, do you have the definition? Go ahead.
No, I don't.
It's legislative service requests is what LSR means.
Thank you.
Legislative service request, LSR. Thank you, Dawn.
Esther?
Yes.
In the next superintendent's update, is some of this information appropriate to add in there?
Some of what information?
Some of the information about the special ed funding from the state, could there be a legislative update corner to your?
Sure, I'm on the legislative committee, so I will get that information. It may not, there may not be much in December. It's usually after January because, as we know, many of our legislators this time of year, they're not real active because of the holiday, so.
I think it would be helpful for parents, you're the people that are seeing your updates, to see this information presented directly into their inboxes.
Sure, we're also going to speak to it in quarterly January, our SAU SLT report will also, so they'll be getting it. But the month-to-month updates, I can certainly add like a bulleted section in print.
I trust your judgment, but I do think it would be great to get right into inboxes.
Yeah, great. Yeah, thanks.
Kim?
Is this letter going to be, I know obviously it's in the board packet, but could it be posted to the website prominently on the?
Sure.
I don't know if it is already, but.
Yep.
I think it's nice to pull it out, it's important enough to have, you know, and even to have, I don't know if it's appropriate to have copies, even at deliberative, because it's just, it's facts, that's all it is. It's actual information.
Yeah.
And it would be helpful.
And that's the piece about, like, the monthly update in the inboxes. I have to be really careful to just say, these are the facts.
Yeah.
Because obviously, I have a biased opinion about what I think, so I'm trying to stay neutral, just to support taxpayers' information, so they have all the information they can to make good decisions.
I think it's interesting, you know, based on the facts that our special education reimbursement's been cut from 87% or so to 67.5 for, I mean, that that has an impact on the decisions we have to make as a board drafting the budget, and that would be interesting to ask, not based on politics, not based on party, but based on the fact that our school district has just lost a huge substantial chunk of funding to serve, you know, our kids who need it the most. So I am to circle back to your comment, say, you know, is it appropriate for us, if we have discussion and agreement, to request that, you know?
At our, at our January meeting, we plan to work with Molly and have a section of what we expected to get at the 87% and what we will now be getting. It is expected because, right, kids' needs change and costs change, but what do we get last year at the 87%? What do we know exists now and would be at that three and a half times more, and what that difference would be? And what would that return be at 87% versus the 67.5? So we're going to try to give you real numbers, as real as we can get them.
Okay.
Based on the flexibility of special education, as well as the educational freedom account funds, charter school placement, things like that. Some of that information is pretty hard to get, like homeschooling is tough to get numbers and impact. I can say, and I just had a conversation with Mr. Berestow today, that this is the time of year we start to get some of those kids that were either homeschooled or charter schooled, and now they're returning. They don't count in the October 1 enrollment report.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yet, they're returning now. So I don't know if some of those were educationally funded account kids or not, and I probably won't be able to know. We're going to try to see if we can figure things out like that, but it's pretty hard to get that information.
So what I hear you're saying is that in January, you'll have more specific information about the amounts, we hope, relative to that reimbursement cut?
Yes, yes.
And that we could entertain a discussion whether we want to ask for emergency funding because now we are going to the taxpayers with a higher tax burden because of the cut from the state.
At the end of the year, yes.
I mean, I think just to go on record, if that's what we all feel is appropriate, so.
So just, just so people are really clear, operating budget costs would still, are still operating that, you wouldn't see that till the end of the year because, remember, that's revenue coming in. So that's when it is the impact on the tax, setting the tax rate.
Right. Yep.
That's all the good news I have for now.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you for that, though. I just want to say, if I can, this, thank you for the transparency and reporting this information. I think sometimes districts shy away because we're, you know, don't want to be accused of being political, and this is just factual information in terms of what's going on in our state. So I do appreciate you bringing that information and elevating, and just also appreciate the fact that you do serve on the legislative committee, you said, for the Superintendent's Association, which is yet another meeting and another opportunity, but thank you because of that work that we're able to be well informed, so I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Is that HB 1670 that would have required the, I'm just trying to?
I gotta look back on the notes.
56?
1656, is that the one? That was the additional 17.7 million, and that's in here, Scott.
Okay, I thought I, yeah, I missed, I must have.
Great, though I think based on all that conversation, some of my questions were answered, and I think you said that, you know, I think the board and you have done a great job over the last couple of years of of maintaining and actually cutting costs. We can't forget that all the work that the BAC did and all the members that showed up and looked at this. And I was at that last meeting, they, right away, they said, we approve, because they understood that, and now we even have more information to go on, so it's really helpful for all of us to do that. So we do appreciate that. The letter was great. I do have a couple, couple of questions about the letter that I can just ask you aside.
Before I post it, post it, because it is a draft, but we want to get it out, so.
Couple of things in there that probably should be addressed.
Renee, it did be, it did be, we had to get it out, so.
Okay, yes, yes. But I'm sure the due diligence on this letter was was a pretty, a lot of work, no doubt. So thank you for that. Good, you all said.
I am, that's for my report.
All right. And with that, it is 6:47, so I'm going to close public input. Good, public input's closed. We're going to move on to the financial report.
Sure.
Which is, great, so.
So I did leave that audit questionnaire up there for you to sign, Bill?
Yeah, I do, I've got this.
Okay, yep. So if you want to sign it, then I put a little sticky on where you should sign.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Otherwise, it'd be all over the place.
So I'll just collect that.
And thank you, everyone, for filling out the information that you emailed back. This is where it shows up, so.
Excellent, so if you sign it, and then I'll just pass it back this way. And then one other thing before we dive into the current year financials today, we actually were notified that we had received some money, and I'll let Mr. Berestow explain a little bit about it. In the past, we've had the board accept the money just due to the size, it's $7,500, but Mr. Berestow, if you want to briefly explain what it is.
This is a grant that Mr. Cobb and Mr. Fisher jointly applied to the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation to support artists in residence at our school. This is, I'm blanking on the name of the group, Molly.
It says Ball in the House?
Ball in the House is a bunch of a cappella singers, and so they'll do a performance for the kids during the day, the sixth graders, that the, they will, the kids will prepare for and sing with the singers, and then there'll be a performance at night for families to attend, where the kids will perform as well.
And so in the past, we've just had the board make a motion to accept the money.
Great, I'll make a motion to accept the grant money.
And I'll second it.
Excellent. All those in favor? Great, I'm glad that the board wants to accept money, that's a good.
That's a good thing, yes.
Yes.
And then the next thing is the current year financial. So in your board pack, we did add quite a bit of expense from last month. I did note next to all the items there, I did have one. I did note next to all the items there, I did have one typo, it's not, it's a new hire at EHS, not T EHS, but did anyone have any questions on those items?
So Molly, on the, on the report, you have it listed as revenue surplus, is that unanticipated revenue that you received?
Yeah, that's above and beyond, yep. I was just going to jump down to that afterwards. And so when we set the MS 24, we are seeing some additional revenue than, because when we project the revenue, it's at the beginning of September, and so the bigger area is related to SST, I had worked with Dr. Carr about how many students were at the time, and usually we have a few fall off, but we actually had quite a few more than anticipated, so.
So our fund balance is 1.3 million, which is less than what we had last year, so I think it's important, especially when we're getting to budget time at deliberative session, to let everybody know, we haven't, we don't have $2 million left over right now, we have 1.3, because we can't spend that.
Correct.
Unanticipated revenue, so I think it's another story that we get to tell at budget time, that, you know, somebody just can't get up and want to cut 2 million, because we had $2 million left over. We really don't.
Yes, that's a great point.
That's really good for, what's our budget, 60, how many million dollars is our budget?
I believe it's 68 million.
68 million, 1.3 million left over right now is, is pretty good.
Yeah, it's like budging down to the penny.
Yeah.
And I think, that's why we started, we added this, all the previous year fund balances, because we were receiving a lot of questions on that, so it just might be important for those of you who haven't gone through the deliberative for the co-op, just to take a look at that, and just understand the history, because we can't, obviously, we can't spend more than budget inappropriate, so you can't make a mistake.
And just keep in mind that that fund balance in the bottom right-hand corner is the combination of revenue more than planned and expense less than planned.
Yep. And as you know, we make a video, and I know Molly's going to really try to explain that fund balance and the percentage it is of the budget. And I think, you know, sometimes when you relate it to a home budget, when you budget a year and a half and ahead, and you have that 1% to 2% with a room for a home budget, and relate that over to this budget, so, because sometimes the numbers are big, and it's hard to wrap your head around, but when you do a typical home budget and the medium income, then you can say 1% would be X amount of dollars, and as you know, your roof needs replacement, there it goes. And that's why it's important to have that 1% to 2% in there, because we never know. So hopefully that'll help.
And speaking of the roof, I know we wanted to talk about trust funds.
Yeah, are you, are you, any other questions on the regular financial update? So I know Molly has the draft budget. I just wanted to clarify with the board, I think we have our operating budget, at least to go forward with for a public hearing. What I wanted to talk with the board about is that last year, we did that 200,000 from fund balance, so no tax impact, no tax impact for the capital reserve fund. That is for the potential roof. Remember, I think Rusty said five miles of roof?
Acres.
Acres, sorry. I would recommend that we do the 200,000 again, because that was a number that Rusty thought consistently, again, not a tax impact. And then the 50,000 for the turf, because again, that's kind of that savings towards that turf, from fund balance, not a tax impact. Would the board like to move forward with those two warrants also, again, this year with those amounts? Or do you want to change those or not have them?
So I'm in favor of moving forward those. Do we need action taken on that, or?
Nope, I would just know to put them on, and then we'll, you know, the public hearing, you'll gather input, and then after the public hearing, you'll approve the warrant, and that's when you'll sign off on what it is.
I see people nodding their heads, is there any?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to include them.
All right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And when we speak of the public hearing, which will be the next time we meet in January, usually we do the video, and I do my introduction, and everybody else kind of goes over the major changes, and they, we're working on that, and that's pretty much wrapped up, that video. The board then would listen to a public input. Certainly, we're there to support board members. If you, if you, that questions are asked, you know, don't, don't hesitate to ask us to help you explain it, if you, if you would like us to. And then you close the public hearing, and it is only after the public hearing that a motion will be made in your normal board meeting, whether to move forward with this operating budget number, or a different one, wherever you end up after the public hearing, because the purpose is to get here, to have the public give you input, before you make a final decision to, about what to move forward with.
Okay.
Okay, everybody clear about that process, just kind of a refresher. I know most of you have been through it numerous times, so I think we should be good.
Hello?
She's mine. Any other questions around the fiscal year '26 budget? Anything else to add, Molly? If you get anything?
Nope.
All right.
All right.
I think we're, we're ready to go for the next couple of meetings.
I will just add, I'm like on a roll, right? I'm wrapping up in March, I'm just, I, I think it's really important, like Helen, our former board chair, would always do a really terrific job at the deliberative in making a statement in terms of, you know, that we've reviewed the budget, so I know you will do an amazing job, but I think, you know, there's really a role for all of us at the deliberative to, and even at public hearing, to speak up, because the public deserves to know that we reviewed it, if there's issues, so even if you, we can all think about, you know, just something that, what's resonating with you, like, why are you in favor of this budget? I think that's really important for the public to hear from us, and we don't have to go on and on, but I think it's, it's super important, because they deserve to know that we've reviewed it, that we're comfortable with it, it's a big ask, and that we also understand the landscape against which this budget's being passed, and what's happening in the state, and all of that, so that's just my, my ask. I think that, I know I always leaned on Helen, because she'd be, and, and it's, it's really, you know, important that we all weigh in on it, so thank you for considering my request.
Thank you.
In my final few moments.
We will certainly review that during our next budget meeting, and, and thank you for all your work to help set us up. All right, so we'll move on to the committee reports. I know the first one is strategic planning. Do you, Scott?
I was not at the meeting, but I'll ask Esther if she could cover that for me.
We're, we are well on our way as a committee, and what will go out the, right before, right after the holiday, is a flyer to your community, your board reps, and in this case, Scott will get one, and that'll be, it's their job to get it into, in Scott's case, the Brentwood, whatever their kind of venue is for communicating with the community, also hanging the flyer around, that'll have the QR code that people can scan to fill out the survey around, all the questions for strategic planning, that are questions that are all aligned to our vision statement. That committee has reviewed that survey, given input, reviewed it again, and that is ready to go, and so the flyers are being developed. I will send out a very similar email with QR codes to the principals to push out to families, as well as our grades six through 12 students will have the opportunity to take that, I'm hoping. The in-school reps were supposed to approach principals, I'm looking at Drew to see if it's happened yet, I reminded them in an email yesterday, to allow students to do this during the day, like during advisory, or some other place where kids have their Chromebook and can go on and take it, or however they want to do that, but trying to get kids to do it in school, so we get a high return from students also. That's really to help us guide that work in March. So once we have those survey results, which will be open till the middle end of January for people to fill out, from community members, families, and students, then the committee will meet, will kind of brainstorm with Qualtrics Nick Kahn, to get his setup for the strategic planning session, which will be facilitated by the Qualtrics folks. We'll all be there, we've been pushing that date out constantly, so hopefully people are getting the message and marking their calendars. I would hope that all the board members can attend, unless you can't. But that's that 5:00 to 8:00 PM, March 27th and 28th, I believe, and then that 9:00 to noon on Saturday, which is the 30th, or the 20th, whatever those three Thursday, Friday, Saturday dates are. Again, we'll have food and childcare available, so hopefully that'll help make attendance easier for families, as well if, there'll be a spot if you need a translator, or some kind of hearing, you know, any of the disabilities will try to accommodate and make sure that you still have access to participate. So we're hopeful that we'll get a high participation rate. Certainly, we're looking to end up with getting those themes, and then internally, through our administrative retreats, et cetera, at the end of the year and over the summer, we'll develop action steps and action plans based on the themes the community have said they would, they want us to have as a priority in SAU 16. So, the committee's done great work. The 20th will meet, we'll kind of finalize dividing out any facilitation duties, et cetera, for those March days, and then after March, that task force should be done, and everybody will be then getting the updated strategic plan with action steps, probably at that joint board meeting either in September or October.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good, safety and security.
Has not been a meeting.
Okay. Then policy committee, Melissa's not here.
I know, I'm like deer in headlights, because she always does that, I just noticed she wasn't.
She wasn't, and we have Heather here, I'm sure Heather knows a little bit about policies.
A little bit, yeah.
So inclined to chat, so we're looking at policies right now, and did anybody have any comments about the policies? I had just one clarification on, on one of the policies, which was the.
Oh, no.
Tutoring for pay? So thank you for, Heather, thank you for the summaries for all of the, the policies, it's very helpful. The tutoring for pay, so it, I think I read it correctly, but if I'm a teacher, I can't tutor my own students, however, I can, I can tutor other students.
Correct.
For pay, okay. All right, just want to make sure I was reading that correctly. Good. Anybody have any other comments about the policies? Good. Then is it okay to, I look for a recommendation to accept all the policies in the board packet?
We'll commend to accept all the policies as presented.
Great, Amy?
Second.
All right, thank you, Kim, for seconding that. So all those in favor of approving the policies in the packet, please raise your hand. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Bill, could we also do the one withdrawal?
Say that again?
Could we also do the one withdrawal?
Policies to withdraw.
Oh, yes, I didn't, okay.
On the back.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
GBGD.
Okay. So I look for a recommendation to withdraw.
Either way, I'm going to make a motion to withdraw GBGD-R.
Excellent. Do you have a second, Ellen? Great, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Great. Thank you very much. All right, Bob, SST, how are things going?
Okay, I have a couple of things. Let's see, the week of December 2nd, students from the welding and building constructions earned the OSHA 10 certificates. This is an important certificate for those students going directly into the workforce. And on December 12th and 13th, students in careers in education were certified in CPR and first aid. Our school nurse, Lisa Chamberlain, was the trainer. And on the 12th, our culinary arts, digital media arts, and pre-engineering programs collaborated to host the Santa Super Craft Fair. And also this year, Anne DeMarco and the animal and plant science class in FFA participated not only in the Festival of Trees at the Town Hall downtown here in Exeter, which raises money for the children's program in Exeter, but also took part, for the 28th time, they were, they had a float in the Exeter Holiday Parade, so 28 different, just as, as long as the parade has been around, they've been participating. So SST is busy, and thank you.
They are, they're, they're involved in that, the.
Yeah, pretty involved.
Yeah.
It's great to see all the community activities.
It is, I love that they're involved in doing things, and the Christmas tree was great, the, did you go to the Santa Super Craft Fair, Bob?
I did not.
Okay.
I did.
I wonder what that's like, because that's a very interesting mix of students, the crowd, the engineering and culinary, and very interesting. I'd love to have known what that's like.
That night that they, the town does the Santa block party, that's an incredible crowd, and just a wonderful night in Exeter. I mean, it, it really brings Exeter alive, and it's a fun night for kids, but it's a fun night for us older folks, too.
Agreed, yes. It really is. The lights downtown look great, so I appreciate your report, thank you, Bob.
Absolutely.
I have nothing to report, except everything that we've gone over. Is there any new business or old business that we want to bring up? Okay. With that, we are going to go into.
Can I just make one brief announcement?
Yeah.
I invited a guest tonight, and.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna.
Dr. Eric Miller is here, and Dr. Eric Miller is a resident of Kensington, and we were talking about school board, and I said, "Well, if you want to talk about school board, why don't you come and see us in action?" So I invited him tonight. So he's been very patient, and thank you for coming.
Yes, well, thank you for coming, yes.
Interesting, I'm the only person publicly here.
It's because everybody's watching on YouTube. It is, it's unbelievable, yes.
It's a big event.
I know. Well, thank you for coming, we appreciate it. And that, now we had, now we have to kind of kick you out, so. The welcome, then the kick out, I, but you are always welcome to come, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so we are going to go into a non-public under.
Compensation A.
Okay, I think it's, it is A, isn't it?
Compensation A.
Yeah, so we're going to go into non-public session under RSA 91-A-3A. So all those in favor, Kim?
Roll call.
Yeah, I know, so I have to roll call, so, no, 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 I.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Excellent, we are in non-public. Thank you. Thank you.